Good evening, folks, and welcome to tonight's city council meeting and committee of the whole meeting. The city council meeting is called to order. I kindly ask our city clerk to please take the roll call.
Bowery, here. Bruno. Ruby. Kilburg.
Here.
Casarog.
Here.
Maladra.
Here.
Marx.
Here.
Mayor.
Here.
Pashke.
Here.
Swanson.
Here. We begin our city council meetings with the pledge of allegiance. I would like to invite Mr. Ahern, Mr. Cotton, and Mr. Millen to please lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. This may be one of the few nights, perhaps the only night, that Rich Babica is sitting on the south side of the chamber.
I used to sit here all the time. It was a blind spot from cameras.
Is that right? Yes. The FCC thanks you. Folks, our first item of business, we have the pleasure of introducing several new-ish employees to the city of Geneva. It's my pleasure to introduce and welcome to the podium. We're gonna go by order of the agenda, okay, guys? Did you guys see the agenda?
No.
Okay. Now, it's, it's, we have a formal William Cotton. Will, come on up, man. A proud graduate of Geneva High School.
Yeah, I graduated class of 2016. I didn't go to college, decided to start working afterwards, so.
Good for you, man.
Got my start with the city, working seasonally.
Isn't that amazing?
Yeah, yeah, it was nice, a lot of good experience working with the water department, you know, and then obviously it helped me get the job with Streets this year.
It's exciting, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah, it's nice being back and, you know, I enjoy the work I do, so.
I bet you do. I know that the team enjoys having you as well.
Yeah.
So, we visited briefly prior to the meeting, and I know you helped create this document that I'm gonna read from, correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, good. "I love my people I work for, I love my boss." Is that fair?
Yeah, yeah, that's true.
Is that, I know. Former meter reader.
Yeah, I, you know.
So, any good stories from meter reading?
Oh, I mean, I got chased by dogs a couple times.
Yeah?
You know, nothing too crazy, but, you know, you never know when you're going into a backyard if they're gonna be, you know, big dog, small dog, you know.
I can only imagine. Any, any techniques to free your, free yourself from the dogs?
Oh, never got bit, but I did run away, so, that was, uh...
You're a big guy, you'd be running down the street like that.
Yeah, I used to be a lot, a lot smaller.
Yeah.
You know, um, yeah, it was fun, you know, it was a lot of, actually, I loved doing it, you know, they kinda phased it out.
Yeah.
Everything's kind of electronic now, so.
Exactly.
But, yeah, it was a, it was a great, great way to get my foot in the door.
Absolutely, man. And now, again, you're a big guy, but you like to play hockey.
Yeah, yeah, I've been playing since I turned eighteen.
Really?
I play over at Fox Valley.
Yeah.
So, every Sunday night, I'll be over there playing.
What time is your ice time over there on Sunday night?
Could be anywhere from, you know, four PM to eleven o'clock at night.
Ugh.
And, uh, I'll sometimes skip the eleven o'clock ones, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, it could be, you know, it kinda varies, we kinda rotate, early, late games, stuff like that.
So, you, you only started playing at age eighteen?
Yeah, yeah, it's pretty expensive to get into and.
Yeah, it is.
Uh, I finally saved up my money and, you know, I started learning how to skate at seventeen and.
Really?
Yeah, so, I play with, uh, I'm in the same league as Steve Jones, who's also in the street department, so.
Of course, yeah. A lot of cops play over there, too.
Yeah, yeah, a lot of cops, firefighters, TSA guys.
Do the cops have any talent whatsoever on the ice?
Uh, yeah, they're actually pretty decent.
Are they?
Yeah.
He's got a gun.
Jer D., you're gonna, you're gonna, any comments on that?
Uh, no comment, though.
No comment? What, uh, I'm gonna guess, are you a forward?
Yeah, I play, uh, usually right wing, sometimes left wing, um, you know, more of like a net front type guy, but.
More of a what?
Uh, net front, you know, I screen the goalie, you know, tip in goals, rebounds.
Did you say Nefron?
Uh, net front.
Oh, I'm thinking, who the heck's Nefron? It's like, did you hear that, too?
No.
Oh, did you? It's like, I thought maybe it's some player I had never, never heard of.
No.
It's like, oh my god.
I definitely make a lot of enemies doing that, you know, so.
Do you?
A lot of physical type play, so.
I can imagine, man. So, with your skates on, what are you, six, seven?
Yeah, probably six-five, six-six with skates.
Yeah, no kidding. Wow. Now, this is pretty cool, we talked about this, and you bragged about your sister, rightfully so. Sister is DeKalb County Police Officer, and she's at the academy.
Yeah, so she's been in corrections for, uh, three years now.
Wow.
And, uh, she just got recommended to go to patrol, so they, they're sending her through the academy, she left this morning, so.
No kidding.
Yeah, I'm, you know, very proud of her.
As you should be. Wow. And, again, we talked about this, you like to go to concerts, but it hasn't been as busy a concert going to since COVID, for all practical purposes.
Yeah, I've just, you know, I kinda took a break, you know, during that, there wasn't really anything going on, and then I just haven't really got back into it, but, you know, I used to go all the time, probably at least, you know, once a month, if not more.
Just around Chicagoland or anywhere?
Yeah, just anywhere around here, Chicago, um, there were, you know, I had a couple friends that had a, there's a basement spot that they used to, you know, have shows out of, and then they actually got a venue down in Naperville.
A basement spot?
Yeah.
Here in town?
Uh, it was in Naperville.
Oh, then who cares?
Um, yeah, but, uh.
They don't flood, yeah.
They don't flood, that's right.
Yeah, a lot of, a lot of, you know, punk shows, metal shows down there.
Okay, I was gonna ask you, so your, your taste in music is?
Uh, you know, old school, punk rock, metal, uh, old country music, um, you know, I could really do anything, but those are usually my main, my go-to.
Yeah, we gotta hear about this old country stuff. So, 'cause Maladra, he's a, he's a guitarist, I don't know if you know that or not.
No.
Older person, he, 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 what's the phrase?
The guitar is a legend.
Yeah.
Yeah.
He plays a mean guitar. Mean guitar, and, uh, older person mayor actually plays the spoons.
Washboard.
Washboard, sorry. So, name an old-time country singer that we would recognize.
Oh, you know, Waylon Jennings, Johnny Paycheck, David Allen Coe, uh, you know.
Roy Orbison?
Johnny Cash, yeah, George Jones.
You a Johnny Cash guy, too?
Yeah, Johnny Cash, uh, you know, a lot of that old outlaw country, you know, from like, you know, probably anywhere from the fifties to, you know, the eighties.
Wow. Do you sing as well?
No, no, I've never been in a band or anything like that, so.
No? Wow. So, what else should we know about you, Will? We know that you prefer Will.
Yeah, I could do, you know, any, but I've been called Will, William, Bill, so, you know, I still have some people at the city calling me William and, you know, it doesn't really bother me too much.
Well, we're delighted to have you onboard.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, welcome, welcome. So, any, any, uh, any stories you wanna share, or any exciting news about you that we should know?
Uh, you know, nothing, you know, too crazy, I just got my, my CDL permit, so I'm working on that.
Congratulations.
You know, I'm hoping to get, get my actual CDL by the time it starts snowing, so.
I was gonna ask you that, so you'll be on that rotation?
Yeah, I've been, uh, we've been getting our hours in, uh, gonna be starting the skills practice soon, so.
Now, forgive me for not knowing this, but where do you train for the CDL?
Uh, so, you know, we, we take our test.
Right.
For the permit, and then, uh, we have a parking lot next to the Public Works Building that we, you know, practice skills in, and then we'll just go out on the road and, and get time on the road.
And you always have somebody else in the cab with you when you're time on the road?
Yeah, yeah, with the permit, you have to have a, a person that's certified, so, with their CDL. So, I've been driving with Melvin, uh, Melvin Shaw.
Of course.
So, he's been helping me and Justin out.
Wow. Well, that's exciting, man. So, do we dare hope for snow for your sake, or do we not say that?
Oh, I mean, you know, it'd be, be good to get some experience in, I've never pod before, so.
Absolutely. And you, you are aware that when a snow and ice event occurs in the city, we just dump that snow in St. Charles.
Is that true?
Yeah.
Is that true, Mr.?
And then Batavia.
Yeah. I know we haul it off somewhere, but.
Yeah, yeah, it's a need-to-know basis, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, we're delighted to have you, Will, welcome aboard.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for being with us.
Thanks for having me.
Thank you.
Nice being back.
Justin Millen, come on up, Justin. I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask the dais here, 'cause you, you're a baseball player, and I guess what position you played. Anyone else wanna guess?
Shortstop.
Close.
Close.
Second base.
There you go, second base, man.
Yeah, very cool.
And yet graduate of West Aurora High School.
Yep, as of last year, so.
That's exciting, man.
I'm a young one, nineteen.
You, that's on your bio right here, too, it says, "I'm a young one." May I ask when your birthday is, Justin?
This November.
Nice, man.
The tenth.
That's a good day.
Yeah.
Do you still play ball? Do you still do pickup games?
I do, yeah.
No? Do you do softball or anything like that?
I've always wanted to, 'cause my brother got into it with a couple of his guys from work, but other than that, haven't really done much baseball. Kinda, my brother used to be a mechanic, and he got me into cars and trucks and all that stuff, so.
Yeah, 'cause it says here, "You love to work on cars and trucks."
Yeah.
Does that come naturally to you? Did you grow up just knowing how to tinker around these things, or?
Most of it, yes, but I did learn a lot of it from my brother, since he was a decent mechanic, he was at, uh, Ditchwich, and, uh.
Oh, no kidding, nice.
So, he started getting cars and trucks and all this stuff, and then started showing me how to work on it, and then I bought my own truck, and that led into a lot of doing work myself on my own truck, so.
What kind of truck do you drive?
It's a nineteen ninety-eight Dodge Ram.
Nineteen ninety-eight?
Yeah.
Wow.
It's an old one.
But you know what you're doing, so it's one's perfectly, I assume?
Yeah.
Do you have a vanity plate?
No, I do not.
I thought maybe it was like, you know, second base or something like that, or?
Nope, just original.
Do you work on cars as, as currently as this model year kind of stuff? Or is that, you like to tinker with the old stuff?
I'm mainly into old cars.
Is that right?
It's just kinda my style, but, I mean, if I, I work on my, uh, family's cars and stuff, if they need like maintenance done or something like that, do oil changes or whatever, small fixes.
Are people calling you all the time for that, too?
Yeah.
Really?
I've had neighbors ask me for help on stuff and all that, but.
Do you wanna list your phone number in case anybody watching? Youngest of three kids, you said, a brother and a sister.
Yeah.
Earlier. And you call Aurora home.
Mm-hmm.
It's not a bad commute at all, is it?
Straight down Randall.
Yeah, yeah.
All those darn lights, though, isn't that terrible? No.
But you report to work pretty early.
Yeah.
So, you're missing all that.
Sorry?
You're missing all the lights and all the traffic and all that nonsense.
Oh, uh, going home, it's normally worse with school buses and all that stuff, but, 'cause school's going now, but.
Absolutely.
Other than that, it's not terrible.
And so far, so good?
Yeah.
Any exciting stories you wanna share that we can share on a family-friendly television?
Um, I don't really have much.
No?
I mean.
You got a good crew, though, don't you?
Yeah.
Now, where, where do we, when we are out cruising around, where will we see you?
Probably out in Sandwich. My brother just moved out there.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah.
And what about when you're working in Geneva? Where are you working? Where are you assigned to?
Um.
Does it depend on?
We do a lot of tree work.
Ah.
Trees, sometimes asphalt, spend more on the tree side, though. Today, we were doing a lot of, we had a few removals and trims, so.
And we got some patching coming up soon, too, don't we?
I'm sure we do, yeah.
Yeah, I'm sure. I think Rich, you have the list of what needs to be patched and whatnot? Oh, boy. And when do, when do the asphalt plants close? Another month?
Usually after Thanksgiving.
Oh, not till, oh.
There might be one or two that, that will stick it out if it's decent winter, like last year.
Yeah.
Which was a great winter.
Yes, it was. Sorry, Will, no, no snow, man. What else should we know about you, Justin? What else do you wanna share?
I, uh.
And you don't have to, heck.
I came here.
We'll just make something up.
I came here working from the Aurora Township Highway Department. Um, I enjoy working outdoors, I like the outside environment, which was a big lookout for me when I went applying here. Um, I'm not much of an inside person.
Neither are we.
Yeah, so.
Now, don't blame me, man, to be out and about.
Yeah.
We're delighted to have you onboard.
Yeah.
And thank, thank you for joining the team, too.
Thanks for having me here.
Appreciate it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Love you.
Tim, do you prefer Tim or Timothy?
Either one.
Timothy Ahern. Now, this is the perils of having somebody fill this out themselves, check this out.
Well, I was, it was twelve five.
Oh, what are you trying to say?
When I wrote it down.
Thanks, Rich. Make it twenty-six font, the guy can't see. Now, I'm gonna, I'm gonna skip around here, 'cause this, 'cause I, I was teasing you earlier about this one reference. Check this out, folks, "My wife and I," how many years ago?
Marriage.
You don't get this wrong, Meg, you got it wrong earlier.
Three years. I, I, I thought about it, it's three years.
Okay, it's three years, okay.
Three years ago.
Took a twenty-eight-day honeymoon to Italy, France, Switzerland, Greece, and South Elgin.
Yeah. Had to get back home.
Yeah, had to get back home, that's right. You've been to seven countries outside the US in the eight years we've been together. That's pretty wild, man.
Yeah.
And fifteen states.
She was always a big traveler, I really wasn't, I was mostly work-focused, and she kinda changed that for me.
That's a, that's a huge jump to go s-
Yeah.
I mean, twenty-eight days, that's, that's almost unheard of.
Yeah, it was, uh, it was probably two days too long, I would, I would say.
Oh, just, just.
Yeah, honestly, twenty, twenty-six was perfect.
Is your, is, is your wife wa, is your wife watching this by chance?
She would actually agree.
Is that right?
I think we just stayed in Santorini for two days too long, so.
How do you stay in Santorini, too?
I know it's weird, but it's a small, small island, so.
That is wild, man. You and your wife are big outdoor people.
Yeah.
You like to hike, kayak, and bike?
Yes.
And, of course, travel the world.
Yeah.
So, where do you hike and bike?
So, we usually go Wisconsin.
Oh, you do?
Wisconsin area has a lot of, a lot of good trails.
Yeah.
Um, along the river's perfect here. Uh, what was it, yesterday? Yesterday, we did twenty-three miles along the river.
No kidding?
So, that was nice.
Did you, did you?
With biking.
With bike, what kind of bike do you ride?
Uh, it's actually, it's kinda funny, um, my father-in-law's.
It's not a tandem, is it?
No, it's my father-in-law's, uh, road bike, so.
Really?
Yeah, yeah. So, he doesn't ride anymore, so I was like, I'll take it.
Wow, that's, he must be like in his fifties or something.
His seventies, something.
Okay, good, thank you. Wow. And kayaking, on the Fox?
Yes, yep. Kayak the Fox, and then up in Switzerland, we did a little bit of kayaking.
Oh, oh, did you? Wow, wow.
Yeah.
And you, obviously, you brought your kayak with you on that trip?
Yeah, oh, it's, you know, it somehow fit, it's one of those foldable ones, you know?
Good lord. You've been a member of the proud, and rightfully so, IBW Local 196 for fourteen years.
Yeah, yeah, so I signed up right through, out of high school.
You did, okay.
Um, and that was in oh-nine.
It's South Elgin High School, right?
Yep, South Elgin High School. Uh, so I graduated in oh-nine, there was no work at that time.
That was a tough time.
So, they looked at my transcripts, they said, "It looks like you're pretty good at school, so would you wanna go to, would you wanna go to school?" So, I went to ECC.
Yeah.
For about a year and a half, and then got a call to, um, start climbing school, so.
Where did you train with the IBW?
That is in Ohio, Medway, Ohio.
Really?
Yeah.
And that's where the, is that where the, forgive me, climbing school is located?
Yes, that's climbing school.
It is?
And then we do our once-a-month schooling at Kishawaki College.
Oh, you do, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
So, you wouldn't be, you didn't train at all out of the Winfield location?
No.
Okay.
No.
So, they ship you to, respectfully, Ohio.
Yep.
And you learn how to climb.
Yep, yeah, 'cause Ohio is, uh, in charge of like seven states, or the, um, LBAT is where I did my training.
Wow.
They're in charge of seven states, so they kinda centralized it in Ohio.
Your associate's degree is in accounting and business.
Yeah.
And you ultimately got your BA?
I'm going for my BA right now.
Oh, science for engineering?
Yes.
Wow, Arizona State.
Yep.
How's that going for you?
Pretty good, um, online schooling.
Yeah, do you like that?
It's, I mean, it's not bad, you kinda teach yourself more than, than anything else.
Of course.
Um, but you still learn the material, and, uh, you really learn how to communicate with emails, um, Skype and all of that, 'cause that's the only way you're gonna communicate with classmates. Um, right now, we're doing a project with three other students right now, one's in Iowa and the other one's in Arizona.
No kidding?
So, so it's, it's kinda cool, that's what the industry's at now, a lot of people are around the world that you're gonna be communicating with, so.
That's pretty cool.
It's a good, good experience.
And it says here, you and your wife bought your forever home in Batavia about a year ago.
Yeah, yep, um, actually kinda right on the border, uh, it's the new Pulte, um, development right behind Coles.
Oh, sure.
On Randall, right there.
Oh, yeah, it's a beautiful neighborhood, man.
Yeah, that's a seven-minute drive for me, for work.
Oh, life.
Yeah.
Life is good.
Yeah.
So, so far, so good?
Yep.
What's your next trip planned?
So, next trip, we're thinking next year, um, Canada, most likely, we'll go up to. Um, I've never been to Canada, she's been a couple times.
May I ask, may I ask what your wife does?
Uh, she is a mental health therapist.
Is that right?
She is.
Wow. And, uh, obviously a big traveler.
Yeah, yeah.
And how does she convince you that this is what to do? Get the heck out of Dodge and go travel and see the world?
I mean, beats, beats working, you know? It is, it is fun to work.
How many vacation days do you get, for god's sake?
Well, see, that's just, um, on the contractor's side, you don't get any vacation days, but you just don't get paid when you don't work.
Of course.
Um, so you can take as many days off as you want, but you're just not gonna get paid for it.
Hmm. You having fun so far?
I am, yeah. The guys are great, work's good, you know, electricity's electricity, no matter where you go, all acts the same.
Safety first, right?
That's right, yeah.
Did, uh, any, um, stories from the storms?
Um, but, I mean, as they know, a lot of trees down.
Yeah.
A ton of trees down. Uh, good, good amount of wind this year, which has been very interesting.
Yeah, it sure has, but.
Tornadoes kinda to the south.
Yeah.
As a lineman, you become a meteorologist, 'cause, um, as a subcontractor, you get sent out to hurricanes, um, anything that happens throughout the states. So, you kinda understand the weather patterns and what's gonna happen.
Wow. Well, it's, it's exciting, man, to have you onboard. We're delighted that you're here, thanks for choosing Geneva.
Yeah, glad to be here.
We appreciate it. Welcome, Tim.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. It's a good group, Rich. Now, according to Rich's memo, it said, "Please be gentle, these men are very sensitive." It's like a bad episode of The Muppets, isn't it? Okay. No, no, it's all good, man. Item four, amendments to the agenda. Are there any amendments this evening? Item five is the omnibus agenda. All items marked with an asterisk are considered to be routine by this council, and those items can be considered and voted upon with one motion. Is there such a motion? Motion by Patchkey, seconded by Mayor. Clerk Kellick, please take the roll.
Patchkey?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bowring?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Casarag?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
With eight votes in the affirmative, zero votes in the negative, and two absent, the omnibus agenda has been approved by this council. We jump to item number eight, municipal bills for payment. We kindly ask our city clerk to read the bills in their aggregate for our consideration.
Bills for payment total $2,803,272.98.
Uh, Mayor, I move that we pay the bills. The individual items for which can be found on the website and in tonight's city council packet.
Alderperson Bowring makes the motion to pay the bills as presented, available in both our city council packets and on the city's website. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Patchkey. City Clerk Kellick, please take the roll.
Bowring?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Casarag?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Patchkey?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
With a vote of eight in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and two absent, the municipal bills have been approved for payment by this council. We jump to item ten, folks, presentation of ordinances and resolutions. Item ten A is, consider resolution 2024-90, waiving competitive bidding and authorizing the city administrator to execute with Cummins Sales and Services to repair 2015 Pierce Enforcer fire engine in the amount of $23,323.66. Motion by Bowring, seconded by Mayor. Ms. Dawkins?
So as stated, the request for your consideration is to waive competitive bidding, authorize Cummins Sales and Services to perform an engine overhaul with a new head for the 2015 Pierce Enforcer fire engine. Um, and this is due to excessive coolant consumption. With us this evening, we do have Chief Antonori, if you would like any more specifics on what that entails. Thank you.
Questions for the chief regarding excessive cool consumption? Was that your nickname in high school, chief?
Yeah.
Excessive cool. I don't sense any or see any. Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Bowring?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Casarag?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Patchkey?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Eight votes in the affirmative, zero votes in the negative, and two council members absent. Item ten A has been approved by the city council. Item ten B, consider resolution 2024-91, adopting a pledge of office and code of conduct for elected and appointed officials of the city of Geneva. Is there a motion? Patchkey makes the motion, Bowring makes the second. Ms. Dawkins?
Okay, so the city council adopted resolution 2006-21, setting forth a code of conduct regarding effective and courteous interactions with city elected officials, staff, and the public. More recently, in July 2023, the Committee of the Whole engaged in a discussion regarding governance principles and practices, where it was suggested that a new governance or code of conduct document be created to which the alderpersons could affix their signatures and affirmation. The Committee of the Whole was asked to provide suggestions to help facilitate the creation of a new document. At a special committee of the whole meeting on July 29th, 2024, the committee reviewed a draft proposed code of conduct or pledge based upon the previous document, the Illinois Municipal League's Model Civility Pledge, and input received from alderpersons. Following that discussion, the consensus was that while most liked the idea of a pledge, as it was shortened to the point, others liked the current code of conduct document with some updating. So based upon this feedback, and for consideration, is a resolution setting forth a pledge of office and a code of conduct for elected and appointed city officials.
The matter's on the floor for discussion. If there's any discussion, I'd be happy to recognize whomever. Alderperson Bowring.
I just wanted to compliment our staff. I thought they did a very nice job incorporating feedback from various perspectives, and I feel very satisfied with the result. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderperson Patchkey?
I agree. I think that everything that was discussed was well incorporated into these documents, and I'm grateful to have them presented to us. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? We have a motion by Patchkey, a second by Bowring to approve resolution 2024-91. City Clerk Kellick, please take the roll.
Patchkey?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bowring?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Casarag?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Resolution 2024... On this matter?
Yeah.
Yes.
And Mayor Burns?
You get to vote.
Yes, I, excuse me.
Sorry.
Nine in the affirmative, zero in the negative?
So I just wanted to say, we'll have a more formal document printed for everybody to sign. I didn't bring that with us this evening, just in case there were any modifications, but we will have that at a future meeting.
Excellent. Item ten C, consider ordinance 2024-34, amending chapter ten municipal elections of Title I Administration of the Geneva City Code relating to redistricting. Is there a motion? So moved. Marx makes the motion, seconded by Mayor. Ms. Dawkins?
Okay, so during the recent meetings where the redistricting awards was discussed, the city council directed staff to draft an ordinance codifying when redistricting should occur. This is an effort to ensure that discussions about redistricting occur at more regular intervals. The ordinance for consideration this evening provides a review of ward boundaries to occur following receipt of the results of an official decennial or special census, or at any time the mayor, city council, or city administrator determines there is a need for review, whichever occurs first. Additionally, the ordinance follows the Illinois Municipal Code, providing that if it is necessary to redistrict, the city council shall immediately proceed to redistrict the city and shall hold the next city election in accordance with the new redistricting.
Questions for City Administrator Dawkins? Hearing, yes, Alderperson.
I was just wondering about its semantics, obviously, but the word "immediately" kind of struck me, and I thought maybe "as soon as practical" or something like that might be, I don't know. Immediately is just like, kind of struck me as a strong word here.
So immediately is the actual statutory language?
Okay.
So that's, we try to model the statutory language as much as possible.
Okay. Anyone else? If not, city clerk, please take the roll.
All right, Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Patchkey?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bowring?
Aye.
Bruno? Oh, my gosh, I'm so sorry. Kilburg?
Aye.
Casarag?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Yep, no, incorrect.
Okay.
With eight affirmative votes, zero negative votes, and two absent, item ten C, ordinance 2024-34, has been approved by this council. We jump to item eleven, folks, public comment. Anyone with us this evening? Number twelve is new business. This is an opportunity for those of the DAS to share any information they'd like with us and the community at large. How about a motion to adjourn the city council meeting? So moved. Marx makes the motion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Were adjourned, we'll take thirty seconds to transfer to the Committee of the Whole meeting. Alderperson Ruby was not able to make it tonight, so I'll go ahead and chair that meeting. Without objection, ladies and gentlemen, we'll commence the Committee of the Whole meeting. Let the record show that all the council members save for. Alderperson Bruno and Alderperson Ruby are present this evening. We have several items of business. Item two is to approve the Committee of the Whole meeting minutes from August the nineteenth, 2024. Motion by Casarag, seconded by Bowring. Questions or comments?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Uh, just under new business, the addition of within sixty days at the very end of new business, that was one of the elements that was not included in the minutes I thought would be relevant. That's all I had. Thank you.
That was a deadline for a particular item? Or is that just...
Yeah, in new business.
Okay. Anyone else? With that recommendation made? That's my question. This is related to the property issue?
Well, it's under new business. In other words, under new business, there's an explanation what was discussed. And all I'm saying is at the end of the last sentence, within sixty days.
On the first paragraph or the second paragraph?
At the end of new business, which would be the last paragraph.
Okay, so after plan initiative, within sixty days, period.
The last... The last line says strategic plan initiative, period, so you're suggesting to add within sixty days after that.
That's right.
And that was a statement made at the August nineteenth meeting that was simply overtaken.
Did everyone else understand it that way?
You made the request. You overran sixty days.
Okay.
I'm just saying that I appreciate if that would be included in the minutes without objection. I would ask that would be included in the minutes without objection.
Without objection? The chair is happy to include those in the minutes? Anyone else? Any other comments regarding the minutes? We have a motion by Casarag, and a second by Bowring to approve with that suggested edit by Alderperson Kilburg. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, please say nay. Thank you. Item of business, item three A, consider draft resolution authorizing the execution of a license agreement with Mc, excuse me, Mcmetro Access Transmission Services LLC. Is there a motion? Bowring makes the motion.
Second.
Seconded by Patchkey. Ms. Dawkins?
So MCI Metro Access Transmission Services LLC desires to install fiber optic cable within specified city public utility easement. For your consideration, is a license agreement negotiated between the city attorney and MCI Metro to allow this project to move forward. The agreement limits the rights of MCI Metro to install their fiber specifically as identified within the shown public utility easement. Um, we do have Director Babica with us this evening, if you have any additional questions.
Questions or comments? Alderperson Mayor?
Within these same easements and areas, are there other similar services being run? And do we, do we have any limit on how many of these conduits can be, can be run from location to location?
Uh, especially on South Street. South Street's getting particularly crowded. As a matter of fact, they originally had requested to be on the south side of South Street, and we kicked them to the north side because of our utility conflicts. Uh, the fiber optic runs are governed under federal authority, and we really don't have much of a say as to whether or not they can or they can't. Uh, I imagine we are going to get to a day where it's going to be extremely congested, and utilities will start to end up getting installed underneath roadways. But, uh, let's see, on South Street, there's us, of course, ComEd. The county has their fiber optic network through there. Uh, Metronet's through there, AT&amp;T's through there, and then there's also overhead installations, too.
So, um, how does the liability, if somebody hits another person's conduit during an installation like this and damages the fiber optic cable, is there liability issues?
There's indemnification on the city, so we're not liable.
Great.
Hopefully, that just...
That's really all we're worried about, right?
That's what we worry about, too.
Okay.
Anyone else? On item three A, we have a motion by Bowring, a second by Patchkey, I believe. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Item three B, consider draft ordinance amending Title IV Business and License Regulations, Chapter Two Liquor Control, Section Eleven License Classifications, Subsection D of the Geneva City Code establishing a Class D nine liquor license for the Geneva Library District. Is there a motion? Patchkey and Mayor, Ms. Dawkins?
Okay, so the Geneva Public Library District recently inquired into getting a liquor license similar to that issued to the Geneva Park District for fundraising and other events held at the library. The Liquor Control Act of nineteen thirty-four was amended in 2016 to permit the sale and consumption of alcoholic beverages within any building owned by a library district if its Board of Trustees approves to do so. Under the provisions of the Act, the library Board of Trustees is required to have a written policy governing how and when alcohol can be sold, and provide proof of insurance before approval of liquor sales or consumption of a specific event. The ordinance for your consideration this evening adds a Class D nine liquor license authorizing the retail sale of alcoholic liquors for servicing consumption of alcoholic beverages in all library district-owned buildings for the purposes of library fundraising events of programs of a cultural, or programs of a cultural or educational nature. Similar to the Class D seven licenses for a park district, there is a fee of $700 required with the initial issuance and a $500 annual renewal fee. Um, with us this evening, we do have Director Lazarus, if you have any questions regarding the library, or myself, if you have any questions regarding the license.
From the DAS, are there any questions for the director regarding the purpose of the license?
Do we ever waive fees like this for the park district or the library district?
We consider waiving fees when such a request is made. Alcohol will only be served when fiction is being read.
And I would note it's an annual fee, it's not per event or per...
Yes, not per event, yeah. Questions for the city administrator? This will be advanced to the city council, of course, for final consideration. We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor of item three B, please indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? This will be advanced to the city council for consideration. Thank you. Public comment? How about new business from the DAS? Alderperson Kilburg?
Uh, I received a memo, and I've been aware of this program that's been taking place in the community, but I wanted to share it for the benefit of any council members that might not be aware of it. But it involves the Westside Cemetery Project, and I don't know if, uh, there's been a lot of communication in regard to this, but Heidi and Chuck Howlett have been very involved in the Westside Cemetery as far as the resurrecting of, uh, uh, headstones that had become buried. Uh, they've done cleaning, resetting, and in some cases, repairs to headstones. And actually, over five hundred headstones in Geneva's oldest cemetery have been, uh, improved and restored to a state. And I think it's, uh, it's of note that this is a service that should not go unnoticed. And actually, Heidi went through a program offered through the state of Illinois, the Department of Natural Resources, in learning how to go about doing this. And also, with the assistance of Geneva's Public Works, that have lent some of their equipment in moving some of these heavier stones. If you walk the cemetery, it's in a much improved state from where it was a decade ago. So certainly, I want to reach out and thank them, and any members of the community that see Heidi or Chuck, or a lot of the other volunteers, they have a handful, let's put it that way, volunteers that have been involved in this on a regular basis, and I think this has been going on probably over a two- or three-year period, if not actually longer. So again, kudos to some unsung heroes in the community that are giving of their time to honor those that have fallen before us. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? Is there a motion to adjourn the Committee of the Whole meeting? Motion by, we'll give this one to Mayor. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Were adjourned, folks. Thank you very much.